I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 12, 2012. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fidesco?
Here.
Commissioner Pill?
Here.
Commissioner Fleet?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Anton? Commissioner Van Buren is here. And Chairman Richard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, if you will please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, I have you all standing, please. Anybody that's going to give any testimony tonight, either for or against any item, you've got to be sworn in. So I swear that any testimony I give this evening shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay, now, while you're still standing, please, 11 years ago in one day, we had many of our citizens brutally murdered on this night. Please, if you would, join me in just a moment of silence out of respect to those people. Thank you very much. I would also ask that you silence any and all electronic devices, and when you come up to present any testimony this evening, if you would sign in. Do we do have a sign-in sheet up there, Shannon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Jill?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. First order of business is approval of the minutes of our August 12 meeting. May I have a motion, please?
They'll move.
Approved. Question by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, the minutes as printed are hereby adopted. I have been told that Planning and Zoning Item 12028, our first item Lamborghini of Chicago, has pulled a request. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They asked to be withdrawn.
That's not to be held in abeyance, that's withdrawn completely?
Correct. We confirm that they do not want to be continued, they want to be withdrawn.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Planning and Zoning Item 12029, Molly Tang regarding the residential property located at 430 South Linden for the following. A, zoning code variance request to permit the replacement of an existing non-conforming driveway which encroaches into the required side yard setback. The proposed setback is approximately zero and code requires three feet. Item B, zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35 percent maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district for the purpose of reconstructing a driveway and replacing a one-car garage. Item C, zoning code variance request to permit a reduction in the minimum required lot area for an existing non-conforming lot. Code requires 7,800 square feet and 6,719 square feet as proposed. Ms. Tang? If you would, please?
Sign in.
If you would sign in, and then would you allude to the hardships? The state law requires that a hardship be presented for a variance. So, to help you along, for the minimum lot size, your lot is already recorded, therefore that is your hardship, you cannot change it. So if you would just address the three items that you want variances for.
Sure. Okay, sure. So would you displease those pictures and the trees? Yeah, one for each, please.
Thank you very much.
I, Molly Tang, am going to present the property of 430 South Linden. The reason why I want to bring up this project is as follow. The driveway is cracked, there are many holes, and the asphalt is uneven. Those abnormalities cause some problems such as, one, icy holes during snowing days, the driveway become extremely slippery, which is not safe for people walk on. Two, the water back to house when it's pouring season, it's unsanitary. Three, the whole driveway has deteriorated barely, it reflects poorly on the community. There are the reasons why I'm asking the permit to resurfacing the existing non-conforming driveway which is encroached into the three-foot side yard setback. The reason I'm asking for a variance is the nature of existing condition is not suitable to comply the current code because the neighbor's lot is higher. Please see picture four. Yeah, the lot is higher. And there's existing wall that blocked dirt from the neighbor's higher lot. That wall need the brick sidewalk, side yard to support the wall. This lot is higher, so it needs the wall, and this needs this area to support this wall.
Ms. Tang, for clarification, is that the north side of your property?
Uh, okay, that I'm going to say-
Right as you face your garage?
It's my property, yes.
It's the north side.
Thank you, Jill.
Okay. The brick side yard is about one and a half foot to two foot because neighbor's fence is over my property. It's on the picture five. It's on picture five. That, um, the pink ribbon is property line which is inside the neighbor's fence, so actually, you know, they are over my property. So it's very, very hard to be, you know, adjust for that three-foot, three-foot variance. And in order to let water flow, we need to remove a portion of the backyard bricks and replace them with permeable bricks to lower labels so that the water will not be blocked. Picture seven. Picture seven. We take out the bricks here and this side here so the water can flow. So. The putting back permeable brick is conflict current minimum 35 percent coverage of lot size code. That's why I'm asking for the other variance to reduce the minimum required. Thank you.
Because the lot coverage is so high on Ms. Tang's lot, and because there have already been confirmed drainage issues, which you can see on the pictures that she's provided to you tonight, we've tried to work with her to help alleviate some of the hard surface on her lot. We've visited the site, gone over the topographic survey for the area, and we've asked her, rather than raise the driveway and her garage, she originally wanted to raise the garage about six inches. We felt that that would contribute to drainage problems for her neighbors and for herself. So we asked for her to remove some of the hard surface, which she's showing on the right-hand side of the garage in picture six. There's concrete pavers going the length of the north property line along the garage, and there's also hard surface behind the garage, and we've asked her to take some of that hard surface out, which will allow drainage to filter through a little bit better. And she's also agreed to resurface the driveway and then replace the concrete patio in the rear with pervious pavers, which should help the situation. Staff would be much more supportive of the variation, even though it's higher than normally allowed, because she's willing to help alleviate some of the surface on her lot.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public comment. We'll start with Commissioner Thomas.
I agree. Thank you for the pictures. When I went out there, I could see what your problem is. Your driveway is where it should not be, but that's the way it is, and it needs to be repaired, and you want to do that.
Yeah, the main purpose is to resurface the driveway, you know, that's why it causes all the problems.
And I think one of the purposes of this commission is to, is not only to have people follow the rules, but also to help homeowners when they're in a jam like you are in, to be able to improve their homes and be able to stay in Westmont. And as long as you're willing to go along with staff and follow their instructions, I don't have any problem with this.
Thank you. You know, the next door's lot a little bit higher, you can see the wall in that area. So it's very hard to, you know, we need a little bit of wall to support that area to make it dirt, you know, afraid that the dirt come over this, over this area. That's on the pictures. The pictures four, you can see that.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes, thank you. Couple of questions. So in picture number seven?
Sure.
I didn't quite follow. Are you taking out some of the pavers on both sides of the garage?
This side and this side because higher, you can see it's one step, about one foot higher.
Yep.
We're going to take out, and we're going to take out this and replace with permeable bricks.
Okay. Well, I think that's going to do some helping. Now, in picture number six, that, those pavers are going to stay?
Those paver has to stay to support this wall.
Mm-hmm.
That's-
Because you have, in the very front of your house, right next to the driveway on the right side, the north side, you have a storm sewer, it looks like, there.
Right.
And I see one of the recommendations is to tie into that. It would almost seem that if you had just sort of a little bit of a dip and landscaped this with grass, it would flow right down to that and end all of this.
The Linden Avenue is much higher to, for my property, actually is much higher, go all the way to the back for the garage, so-
It's higher in the front or the back?
In the front.
The back is much lower, that's where water get that way, all the way-
That's why it's going that way.
Right. So basically, this house is very long, so there's a difficulty to make that lines and label it right and go into-
It's one of the recommendations, but we're also not sure how deep that storm sewer is and whether it would be enough to take in the water anyway. So it's one of the recommendations, but-
I stopped the tape measuring, it seems rather shallow.
Yeah, it seemed pretty shallow, and it was also filled with debris, so we're not sure if it would help, but it is one of the suggestions if it would work.
Okay. What about all those pallets and stuff in the back? Is that-
They're going to remove.
Oh, they are? Because they were there, I know, yesterday still.
Actually, I cleaned the back very, you know, I already cleaned all, you know, the back of the garage.
The pallets were there yesterday, I think, still.
Yeah, the pallets still there, right.
Yeah, because I was there, okay. Because I think that might also be creating a problem in the back, although I think you certainly could get drainage through that.
We cleaned-
No, I think if you're going to follow and work together with the staff, I would be supportive of this.
I definitely will cooperate with Jill.
Okay, great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren?
Yes. Thank you for a very thorough-
Thank you.
...presentation.
You're welcome.
And I know you have a lot of difficulties here with drainage, so and I too am fully supportive of your request-
Sure.
-considering that you'll continue to work with staff on it.
Sure.
That's all I have. Commissioner Fidesco?
I have one question. I want to quite, I want to understand this. As far as the pavers on the right side to the north to your neighbor's property, those will be replaced by permeable pavers?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, all right. That was my question. And I too would like you to research and find out about the drain to the front, if that's at all possible. I know it's going to add cost, but I definitely think that that would work. I mean, if it's deep enough.
Right. It jumped right out of you as soon as you got to the property because it's right there. So we'd like for that to be a viable solution, if possible.
Yeah, okay. I don't have any other issues with it. Good luck.
Commissioner Fleet?
And again, thank you for additional photographs beyond what we had in our packet. And being at the tail end here, I, again, agree that if you are working with staff and it seems like you can reach an agreement with staff and the water moved the way it needs to be moved.
Yeah, sure.
No problem with that either.
Okay. Okay, my turn. Just to make sure, on the pavers where this L comes out to your garage?
Yes.
That's not going to remain, is it?
It's going to take away those here. This picture may be easier and clear.
So on the north-
Both side, this and this, going to remove this because it blocked the floor of the water.
The retaining wall on the north side is going to remain, but before it gets to the garage, it'll funnel the water right to the right side of the garage, right to the back.
To the back, and then it'll go along the rear-
With this L-shaped coming out.
Right. We're going to remove this side.
Because I noticed on all three sides, on all four sides of the garage now, it's relatively impervious. You've got, there's bricks all around all three sides of the garage, and then the driveway and the other.
Right.
Okay, that addresses one of, one of the variances. Your non-conforming driveway. I was under the, I was under the thinking that it wouldn't be no hardship whatsoever to cut back a couple of feet on your driveway on the north side, until I went down Linden Street, and by my count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15 of the existing driveways are existing zero-lot lines, if not within a foot. So as far as a hardship, keep your driveway just the way it is, as far as I'm concerned.
Oh, yeah, of course.
The only thing I would think that could be better, if you would, to take all of your pavers out of the backyard?
Replace with-
Put a deck.
Oh, deck has difficulty. Yes.
How so?
I would rather, I would rather put a permeable, the bricks in the back, you know, the deck-
A patio would allow you to absorb all of your wire.
Yeah, I have-
My personal opinion.
Yeah, but I asked the contractor, they said there's difficulty, this is not, not good suggestion, you know, the best way is just replace with permeable bricks that absorb some of the water, too.
Then we are concerned with the garage level is going to stay?
Correct.
Not increase in height whatsoever?
Correct.
And all three sides of the garage are going to be open to the surface? Okay, I do have one other question. I noticed a quantity of electrical conduit in your backyard?
Uh-
Patio?
Patio.
Yes, there was electrical pipe, three-quarter and a half-inch pipe.
Yes, into the garage.
Is work being done on the house, electrical work? I didn't, I failed to see a permit.
It was there like that when I-
I don't put it on.
I have that when I-
I called you, that's why I turned it on. My apologies, everybody.
I, it was there, I don't put it on. I, when I purchased, it was like that.
All right. Any further questions from staff?
What was the answer on the conduit?
It was just being stored in the garage, that's what I got out of it. All right. Since we need a reading of the findings of fact for zoning variances, may we have a reading of the findings, please?
And before you do so, just a quick comment that per recent discussions where we have multiple variances for a single project that are all interrelated, we're now combining the findings into one finding, so you don't have to be repetitive and read multiple findings. So that's what you have in front of you tonight.
Request for a variances to allow the replacement of an existing non-conforming driveway which encroaches into the required side yard setback, lot coverage greater than 35 percent, and to allow a lot with a substandard lot area. Criteria number one, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in the district in which it's located. The property's driveway, lot coverage, and lot area are existing legal nonconformities. The applicant would be unable to make safety and aesthetic upgrades to her property without these variances. The applicant is not increasing the existing nonconformities. Criteria number two, the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances. The owner did not self-create the existing nonconformities and is seeking these variances to improve the safety, aesthetics, usability, and stormwater flow for this property. Criteria number three, the variation, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. The resurfaced driveway will remain at its current location and the existing nonconformity will not be expanded. The proposed new garage will be at its existing location, and the new garage will not increase the existing lot coverage. Overall, the applicant is not increasing the existing nonconformities of this property and will take steps to improve the stormwater flow across this property. As a result, these variances will not alter the essential character of the area.
If you agree with these findings, please raise your hand. We are unanimous in agreement. The findings of fact for a variance are hereby adopted. Under Planning and Zoning Item 12029, I would, item A, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Village Board, a zoning code variance request to permit the replacement of an existing non-conforming driveway.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, item B, a zoning code variance request to permit lot coverage greater than the 35 percent maximum allowed in the R3 single-family detached residence district.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Van Buren, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
And Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, I would entertain a motion on item C, a zoning code variance request to permit a reduction in the minimum required lot area for an existing non-conforming lot.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Pill. Question on the motion. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Okay, Ms. Tang, you have our recommendation for approval to the Board of Trustees, and staff can tell you when you will be scheduled to go before a Thursday evening committee of the whole.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you. Planning and zoning item 12030, Paul McNauton of McNauton Development regarding the residential property located at 243 East 56th Street, Westmont, for the following. A, preliminary plan of subdivision request to subdivide eight residential lots in the R3 single-family detached residence district.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is John Berry, I'm with McNauton Development.
Paul McNauton, McNauton Development. Good evening.
Thank you for having us here tonight. Just going to be real brief tonight. McNauton Development, we've got 30 years of experience throughout the south-southwest suburbs, developing property and building custom, single-family homes and townhome units. We're fairly new to the Village of Westmont. We're currently working on our very first project, just to the east of Cass Avenue on Hidden View Drive. We have four new homes that we're building and expect the first one to be open for viewing probably within the next couple of weeks. We're excited about this opportunity here at Oak and 56th Street. As mentioned, it's eight single-family lots, one stormwater retention lot. The proposal does not require any variations to the village ordinances. In many ways, the lots exceed minimums. These lots are 62 feet wide and approximately 10,000 square feet in size. We've taken special care to abide by the newly adopted village and county ordinances and stormwater requirements and best management practices. And we feel that the overall development is of the same character as the existing homes on the Oak, East Side of Oaks Avenue. And the overall development will be an enhancement to the village and to the street. So if staff has any comments or the board?
Okay, well, first we'll open it to the public comment. Is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue? If not, we'll close the public comment. Staff?
The developer's been working diligently to work through preliminary engineering concerns, and other than working through those final issues at final engineering, we don't have any other comments. It needs zoning regulations, and it should be a great project.
Thank you. Commissioner Fleet, let's start with you, please.
Okay, so we're looking at the third lot from the south is going to be stormwater retention.
That's correct.
How, how would you prevent, say, kids playing in this in a dangerous situation? How would you, how would you provide levels of safety?
Well, this pond is, with the new ordinance, this pond is all going to be planted with native grasses, so it's not going to be like a dry bottom pond or even a wet, real true wet bottom pond that somebody might be playing baseball in or something like, in and around that, that area. Felt that the naturalized grasses, that, you know, no one's going to be, want to be wading around in that, that material.
So is there, will there be standing water in here most, most of the time, or even if-
At times, there's going to be, typically, there'll be about four inches of water in the bottom, and in some rain events, you can correct me, Scott, if I'm incorrect, maybe about a foot depending, after high-level storms, and that'll drain back down to the four, about four inches after about two days.
And that's pretty consistent with the adjacent developments, their style of detention area, the natives.
No, those are all wet ponds. Those are all retention ponds.
With native grasses and things?
Oh, there's no real grasses there. Those are actually ponds.
This will be all native grass across the whole pond.
Okay, no further questions on it.
Commissioner Fidesco?
I have, I have, well, I have several questions and one for the attorney based on your answer. Do you plan on having association for this parcel, for these?
Yes, there will be.
Okay. Question for the attorney. Since this particular subdivision is adjacent to Fairfield One, Fairfield One, their association has maintenance on ingress and egress of Oak and 57th, and I- And I wanted to also ask the attorney, as far as the retention goes, if there is an overflow on that, does it flow into Fairfield One?
It flows wherever it's designed to flow.
It's going to probably flow to Fairfield One. The only reason I ask is because, have you, go ahead.
This site is actually designed, the outlet for this pond is actually designed to flow to the west.
To the west, okay. So it's going to go in that, in the area that floods all the time anyways? Behind Fairfield One on the north side of 57th?
Okay.
Go see the people that live on that block.
Okay.
Okay, have you, I'm just wondering, you know, just, is there any, anything in the village's ordinances that can, ask them to consolidate since it's going to be right there with Fairfield One? Their association?
Collected within another existing subdivision?
Yeah.
No?
No.
I can't tell you though, I mean, the village has done a stormwater study of the area and they've, their consultant has required a more restrictive release rate of this pond and we are abiding by that release rate.
So there's two issues, I would think, with the stormwater runoff. One is, what's the release rate, which you just addressed? And two, what happens, you know, it's designed for a hundred-year storm?
It is. Yes.
Okay, so what happens if the hundred-year storm, we get consecutive hundred-year storms and it overflows? It's going to go to the west to a flip-prone area, but honestly, my guess is going to be, engineering's going to look at it and say they comply with the new rigorous standards of the stormwater management ordinance and if there's nothing further, they have to do by code.
Okay. Well, the other question is, are these homes going to be empty nesters or are they going to be families?
I wish I had the crystal ball to tell you exactly.
Well, the question leads us to another question.
Yeah, my gut is, at these price points, that it's not going to be very early children, it's going to be later elementary school, high school.
Okay. The reason I ask that is because there's a tot lot there, right on the corner there, as Oak turns into 57th.
Right.
And I'm just wondering if those people are going to occupy that, you know, with their small children, because that's really meant for very small children.
Children, okay.
And just, people in the other association pay for the insurance on that and just, you know.
I take it you live in Fairfield.
Yeah. Yeah, I know that very well. And that's why I'm asking the questions. You know, because, in other words, I feel that there's going to be a disadvantage to the property owners there if there is not an association. If there's an association, that lessens the impact, because people are going to, you know, if there was no association, people are going to say, well, why should I buy on your side of the street? You have to pay an annual fee. I don't there. But the entrances, the reason I mention the entrances, because they're maintained by Fairfield One.
You're talking about the landscape side?
The landscaping and, you know...
Kevin Easman, I'm sure, I'm sure they're...
Yes, yeah. And they're going to be using those entrances.
Right, okay.
So, those are my comments regarding that.
Okay.
Just, I don't know if there's any way of combining, you know, associations, but anyways, I just, those were my thoughts.
Just to jump in, there will definitely be an association for this subdivision, just because we have that big detention facility.
You have to take care of it.
So we're going to lead that to the association. And there's also some Birmingham areas where there's detention. And it just doesn't make sense for each individual lot owner to maintain that area that's on their site. So for the sake of uniformity and making sure that the site is maintained correctly, we are going to establish a homeowners' association, which will run, obviously, until it's turned over, so.
Mr. DeGronin? While I have you standing, please. I had lost track, a couple of people came in late and I was told you were late.
I was, yes.
Okay, that's not the problem.
There may be a couple others.
You have to be sworn in. Anybody that did not become sworn in, so I swear that any testimony I have given or will give tonight shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
I do.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't a disadvantage, because, you know, everybody's going to get the same, you know, in that area.
Area, right.
So, well, good luck. I mean, I don't have a problem with the subdivision. I know that, that when Jim was living, it was his intent to do that.
Do that, right.
But, you know, I don't know how it got to the other side of the family, but...
Well, I think the other side of the family wished he was doing it, so.
Yeah, really.
Mr. Van, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I'm finished, and good luck.
Commissioner Van Buren, please.
As nearly as I can tell, you meet all the requirements in terms of zoning setbacks, lot size, and so on. And the, your biggest problem is going to be the engineering problem, which we are not, as far as I'm concerned, not qualified to make judgments on, and you will have to work with the village and the county or whatever to do that. So I'm saying, good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Pill?
I have a question, maybe more for staff. Could someone explain to me the applicant's request to do the pay a fee in lieu of the 56th Street improvements?
Sure. And Paul, unless you want to...
Yeah, we can jump in on that.
Sure, go ahead. I mean, they've requested that, that will go before the village board for consideration.
What exactly does that, I understand they requested, what exactly does that mean?
That means they would pay the fee to the village and the village would install the improvements.
The ordinance reads that properties that are, have less than two-hundred-and-fifty-foot frontage can be exempt from doing the actual development work, and they can pay the fee, obviously, at the village board's option. And I think since your original memo that came out, we've had additional correspondence with the Public Works Director, and he would support the, he would support, at least from that staff level, the payment of the fee in lieu of the work being done, with the condition that we do not access 56th Street with a driveway, which is acceptable to us.
So it's just the south side of 56th and that stretch that boundaries the northernmost lot?
That's correct.
I have no further questions, it looks like a good start to a, hopefully will be a nice, a nice set of new homes.
Commissioner Thomas?
I see that the landscape architect, Bob Fleck, had some questions about trees. Have you gotten together with him as of yet?
We...
To hash out whatever differences there might be?
He was referring to John Yates, I believe?
No, John Fleck is the landscape, or Bob Fleck is the landscape architect and John Yater is the village board's...
I don't have any additional correspondence and...
Yeah, we have not, we have not met with him, but we intend to. Basically, we left the, after staff's initial comments, we left the tree preservation plan as is, just because, you know, we went out there and we have obviously a tree survey done. Our arborist at Homer Tree went out there and tagged all the trees. They basically do a conditions list on the trees. And he had identified the majority of the, of the trees on the property to be kind of below average. So based on that, we did not propose, they have a conditions list, one through six. We did not propose replacing any of the trees to be removed that were above grade three. So we haven't changed that on the plan. We don't think that we should be required to replace trees that are of below-average quality, which our arborist has told us that they are. But we would definitely, obviously, be willing to, and we will, meet with John Yater and Bob Fleck onsite and resolve that issue, you know, mutually, so, right.
Okay, that's all I have.
I did have one question on your sheet number three, which we showed us. Sidewalk across your detention basin did not appear to be contiguous.
I think probably what that's showing is, with the change of the grades, the, actually, the sidewalk in front of the pond that's existing will stay, and the sidewalks, either end of the pond going from one end of the property to the other are going to be replaced.
So will be a continuous sidewalk?
That's correct.
From one end of your property to the other?
That's correct.
Okay. That was the only concern I just had a question on. I would also commend you on, it's nice to see a developer come in here and not ask for a whole slew of variances.
It's nice not to ask for them. Nice not to have to ask for them.
For holding McNauton's fine reputation.
You've had a few.
That's all, that's all I have. Any further comments by staff or... Okay. Under Planning and Zoning Item 12030, entertain a motion to recommend approval of the, to the Board of Trustees, a preliminary plan of subdivision, request to subdivide eight residential lots in the R3 Single Family Detached Residence District. So moved?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Van Buren. Question on the motion. May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. And Chairman Richard?
Yes.
All right, sir, you have our recommendation. I do apologize, I did have one more question. The parkway trees, none of them will interfere with the proposed driveways?
Not that many out there.
Just because, we tried, obviously, those are great parkway trees.
Okay.
So we tried our hardest to save as many as we could. Unfortunately, Scott, you couldn't design all of the driveways to not interfere with the parkway.
Of course you will be replacing our parkway trees.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, then, sir. Next item on the agenda, Planning and Zoning Item 12031, Anthony Julian of Julian Electric regarding the commercial property located at 400 Plaza Drive, Westmont, for the following: A, site and landscaping plan approval for an addition in the M Manufacturing District.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Anthony Julian, I'm from Julian Electric and we're over at 71 Blackhawk Drive and 406 Plaza. This is 400 Plaza Drive in the middle. We own all three properties, we've been there since nineteen-seventy-eight. So we're looking to add to our 400 Plaza Drive address, we're going to add fifteen-thousand square foot of warehouse and manufacturing space as well as parking. I have, this is our team here of engineering, architect, and construction, so any questions you have for specifics, they'd be more qualified to answer than I would.
Okay, is there anybody from the public who will speak on this issue, ask any questions? Please, if you would, come up, announce your name and sign in.
My name is Julie Heisman. I am, live right and back at Julian Electric, I'm at 401 Philadelphia. We are just concerned with the addition to the building and parking lot, the water retention and what their plans are for that. I've briefly looked at the plans provided by Jill and, yeah, I guess we have great concern, my husband and I, of where the water retention and what their plans are. So I don't know if you want me to wait and speak on that until they present that, or as of right now, the parking lot in some of their building is going to be on an area that a lot of water will drain in that area after any kind of rain. And then, in turn, it does come into our corner of our backyard. So I just don't want all that water that is usually in that area to then, in turn, fall into our backyard. We do also have some other minor concerns that probably could be worked out with the Julian, just in regards to safety and security. Some of their workers currently at one of their buildings, their lot bucks uprights to our lot, and my daughters will sometimes feel very uncomfortable about being out there when their workers are out there. They break out there three times a day and literally are in the corner of their parking lot, smoking and within twenty feet of our backyard, and often gawking and making crude comments. We've called them twice to ask them if they could maybe go up a little bit in their parking lot, but we have not gotten any response from that. And we don't want to be difficult about that. I hope that Mr. Julian would be more than willing to work with us, but I do have some concerns with, number one, the water retention and hopefully not a concern about their workers being ten feet from our backyard.
You are the homeowner then, whose backyard faces the majority?
Yes. They have the three buildings. The middle building is the one that they're adding on to and their other one, so both, two of the three buildings...
You bought up to two of the three?
Two of them, yes.
Who did you place those phone calls to?
The company themselves.
Yeah, when I was out there today, I met the lady that lives to the north of you.
Yeah.
Oh, your wife, okay. Charming lady, she didn't throw any stones at me.
My name is Steve DeBoer, I'm at 724 Philadelphia, Julie's neighbor, also, you know, neighbor to Julian, and I have the same, you know, same concerns with the water drainage and retention. So I hope that the commission, you know, that you address that in the review, so.
I would ask Mr. Julian, could you address these areas or have some of your people?
Our engineer will address those topics.
Yes, hi. My name is Cliff Toberman, I'm the project civil engineer for Norman J. Toberman and Associates. The, from the beginning of the project development, we understand we've filed detention, stormwater detention requirements per the Village of Westmont. And those requirements are, in fact, more strict than even DuPage County general requirements. So what you see out back right now is an old detention basin in the back right now. And maybe if you saw the site plan, what you didn't notice, there's actually a underground vault, very expensive stormwater, underground detention vaulting provided by Stormtrap, who engineers. They're basically, picture a seven-by-fourteen-foot, you know, block unit, six foot deep, and a number of these strung together with the catch basins in the parking lot, first treating the water from the stormwater and then going into the stormwater vault. So actually, you won't see anything, it'll be in the vault. Eighty-five percent of a hundred-year rain, which is seven-and-a-half-inch rain across twenty-four hour period, eighty-five percent of that storage is provided underground in the very last little bit in the parking lot. So picture, it's all underground and just the very most top storm will actually see a little bit of water pounding up to twelve inches deep at a catch basin, on average about three to four inches across that parking lot. That's in a hundred-year design event, twenty-four hour storm event, which I think everybody's seen, over across the Chicago area, almost fifty-year storms, twenty-five-year storms.
Can I refer on the drawing to the location that you're talking about?
Sure, sure. It'll occupy approximately a quarter to, about a good quarter of this parking lot. And right now, what we're trying to optimize in that design is the placement of the, of the units. And the outlet structure, if you could see in the very closest actually to your property, which is the outlet structure. Now, what's in that outlet control structure, it's a large, picture a large six-foot diameter, five or six-foot diameter structure that is underground with a lid, a normal lid on top, two lids on top. But there's a restrictor, one-point-five-inch, little under that restrictor. So today, there's a four-inch restrictor, okay? So this is going down to an inch and a half because of the, the more current standards are much more strict. So that's good news. As well, in this, in the structure, is an overflow baffle that's going to be to where the water should go, no higher. For any reason that were to plug, it'll actually overflow inside the structure and then go out the outlet pipe to the large, there's a sixty-six-inch diameter storm sur, existing storm sur, a main line storm sur that rolls east between or across our, those properties, between the Julian Electric and your property in the backyard. So the connection has to be made there, to that pipe, okay, to that large sixty-six-inch. So the stormwater will outlets at the northeast via pipe. And again, it's a similar, it is outlined by pipe today too, from that existing basin. The only difference being, there's actually more storage being provided. And in fact, the storage being provided is for a hundred percent of the site, the two acres, when in fact, only eighty percent of the site actually drains towards, towards the rear. Twenty percent runs off to the front to West... 20% runs off to the front, to West Mott, I'm sorry, to, um...
Plaza.
Plaza, what am I saying, Plaza Drive. So 20%, so actually, it's overdesigned, in reality, right now, considering the water that's actually going to arrive into those vaults. So it could take more than 100-year storm from, at least from the drainage area that's designed for. So it should be an improvement, actually, and a very expensive improvement as well, for the owner.
Does that answer your question further much so?
Okay, sure.
Please, if you would.
Our property at 406 Plaza, right next door, they expanded on, I, Stu, I think you back up to that, we did this, a very similar expansion in 1999, it had no vaults installed, no water retention, we drained straight into the line, there's no issues, all right? So, as Bob said, we are going, spending 300, well, Village is asking us to spend $350,000 on water storage, for something that 12 years ago, we didn't have to do. So, just to add that in there.
Right, thank you. Staff?
The parking addition is especially needed, as there are a lot of double-parked cars that are in the rear of the applicant's building currently. Staff has noted that a privacy fence is needed against the two residential properties that abut to the north, and who have both spoken this evening. And the applicant has noted to staff that he would like to request a stormwater detention waiver, which would be reviewed by the Board of Trustees. That kind of goes back to some of the conversation that...
That is not our purview, the waiver.
Correct.
That's nothing for us. Okay, let's start with Commissioner Thomas, if you would, please.
And I ask, fence-wise, privacy fence, that's not an issue between, uh...
It's required by code.
It's required.
So they don't, they can't...
So there is no issue?
Correct.
There is no issue.
You have to put one up.
Correct.
Never mind.
I understand our neighbor's concern, and our plan is to go above and beyond, screen that whole thing off.
Right.
So she doesn't have to see us, and likewise...
And you don't have to hear.
Right.
It's just being a good neighbor.
Yes, behind our 406 Plaza, there's evergreens running all the way across, the neighbor can't see an inch of brick from his house. Plan to do the same thing here, so that she wouldn't have to see our property at all.
Okay, thank you.
Sol, I am. John, did you want to say something?
You know, just in looking at the topography, it looks like the neighbor's property is a little higher, and that any standing water in the, in the parking lot to the, no, they're a lot higher.
They're like...
Six, eight, four hundred. Oh, are they?
Yeah. Where we sit over, that's why, as it stands now, we get the runoff in here, in our backyard, we get a little bit of...
So is there any barrier, I guess, between the two properties, so that water isn't cheating off the back parking lot to your neighbor's property?
I think, I think all these topics are addressed with engineering, and we've had many discussions already about this, so if there's any concern, you know, we'll address it.
Stone fence, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, the design right now contains, um, what, 90, you know, to the rear, the rear parking lot's all contained, so all the drainage from the parking lot itself stays within the, in the parking lot. So it will not run off out of the parking lots. Per se, there is a transition, slope transition, because they are higher by a few feet, we're gonna be a few feet higher than, so there will be, um, two, uh, one-and-a-half-foot to two-foot concrete landscape, concrete block walls, that's gonna step. So in that space, from the edge of your parking lot to the property line, there'll be a transition. And the reason we're actually doing that is, one of the village codes is for providing one foot extra above the design volume that you need, so we have to go one foot higher, just in case, to provide a sort of, I'll call it a factor of safety, that the village requires in their, in any kind of overflow. So actually, it's, again, the village code actually is very prudent in requiring that extra foot of freeboard, we'll call it freeboard or extra space, you know, that the water, in theory, should never get to, but it's there if we need it. So that'll even minimize any other probability, other than that little bit in area of the transition from the back to the curb to the property line. So there's 10, 12 feet, whatever that, can't remember the exact number, but it's in that neighborhood. That always has, and always will. Yeah, there's a hedge that, in the landscaping plan, all across, with 30 U's planned completely across, from the northeast corner heading west. So picture 30 U's, being, that's what we have in the landscape plan.
Excuse me, but all of your statements are assuming that all of the detention would be completed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Commissioner Pill? Yes, a couple, just a couple of questions. Is, is that back area currently sort of like the employee lounge area, 'cause it's, it's probably the only area for people to go, is that what's going on?
Yeah, when, uh, when the law was passed, that you had to be 20 feet from the door, we had to be moved, so we haven't abolished smoking out of campus yet.
How do we make the neighbors happy, too?
Well, we're, we'll put up, we'll put up the trees and screening.
Okay, okay.
You seconded go to 406 as well?
Yeah, we'll put it all the way across, we'll put it from where that last tree ends, all the way across your yard. Look behind 406. Those will be, I think he's... They'll be tall.
Are you folks comfortable with those, those thoughts that they've presented?
They'll be installed at a two-foot height, along the border, along the edge.
Now, um, because a lot of our previous 10 minutes has been spent on stormwater, do I understand you to say that they're going to request from the village not to do the stormwater detention, and to not do the vaults?
I'm not sure what the extent of that is, but the applicant has said that he would like to request a waiver from some of the detention.
Can you elaborate on that?
And that would be some of our, that would be some of our local requirements. This is a project that would still trigger DuPage County ordinance, so this would be something that needs to be, you know, reviewed further, with some additional information from the engineer. Yeah, we told the applicant that their engineer would need to meet with our engineer to see if that's something that we could support to the village board.
Well, let me ask staff a question, and perhaps the chairman would give us some guidance also on this. So, we, we have residents in the neighborhood concerned about flooding, we have an elevation difference, we have a very well-thought-out plan, and I understand the expense, I'm your neighbor also, and have put those into, and they're... Ours was 250, I can imagine, it's gone up another 100,000. But we're, we're being asked to approve this based on these drawings, which they're then going to perhaps seek a waiver, and I don't understand what the waiver would be for, when you say it's the village part and not the county part. I'm not sure I understand the difference. Is there any explanation that you could provide us?
We're fortunate to have a special guest with us this evening, in the Public Works Director and Village Engineer. I think he's here for the next agenda item, but maybe he would, his valuable insight would be helpful. Sorry, Steve.
I don't mind. Stephen May, the Director of Public Works. I'm not the reviewer of the property, but I do, you know, as village engineer, I just review a lot of these with Kim, and when questions come up. And, you know, as far as, you know, I was concerned this was conceptual, or the, you know, because of the, the expense, that, you know, that this might be considered to be requested, but it hasn't actually been requested yet. The difference between the ordinances, our, our local ordinances are more stringent than the counties', and they have been since, well, at least 1986, as you know, I can speak to. The, one of the most recent changes in the DuPage County ordinance, well, well, prior to, a couple months ago, the county ordinance and our ordinance were similar in that, when you have a certain disturbed area and detention requirements kick in, you have to provide detention for the entire site, whether it was omitted in the past or not. You can't just, you know, you have to improve upon the situation that's there now. All the other commercial properties around there, you know, have done that. I mean, the closest neighbor would be like Jewel, they've got a very elaborate stormwater detention under their parking lot, and that was all paved before. Actually, they had no new impervious area, they had no new stormwater impact, and they still had to provide detention for the entire site, 'cause they disturbed it. The difference now is that the county has recently relaxed it, in that they will permit detention just for the change in disturbance, the change in permeable or impermeable area, and you can provide detention just for that increment. Our ordinance does not permit that, there's, that's still good, I mean, there's no new impact to the neighbor, and there's no, you know, additional threat, but it doesn't fix any problems that would be, you know, since we did the village-wide stormwater study, as far as I know, there's been no relaxation of that requirement. But the county permits it.
In this particular instance, they have direct access to a huge, uh, stormwater drainage point, right?
I, well, I don't know, I'm not the reviewer, but I assume so.
Wasn't that what we said, what's the size?
And if this property is tributary to that sewer now, it will be tributary to it when they're done, too.
That's surcharged in a, in a rainfall, in a high rain?
I'm not certain, I mean, it all dressed, you know, easterly, it goes through the detention basin system in the Oakwood Residential subdivision, and eventually across Route 83.
It sounds to me like they're saying, if we have not had a problem with this, and we can, we can go directly into it, why would we spend $350,000 for this vault? And I guess this is...
That's their question.
That's their question.
But that is our ordinance.
That's always been my question, too.
Commissioner Pill, he asks for clarification from the chairman. I would suggest, this is not the...
Purview?
Purview of this board for the stormwater detention, we could probably, under a separate motion, make a motion of recommendation to the village board, that they one mandate stormwater retention, or we could just leave it mute.
One comment to that effect, also, that will be something that's naturally part of the ordinances, all subject to final engineering. One thought was that if they end up having any sort of reduction or elimination, that wouldn't change the overall site plan, which was the item on the agenda before you. So, that, that would be resolved, and it shouldn't really change the site circulation, location of the building, et cetera.
That's specifically my question, because it would alter the site plan, am I not correct?
It's an underground vault.
Is eliminated.
Right.
Because it is part of our site plan. Correct. As it exists.
Well, it's an underground vault.
The amount of impervious surface is not changing. So, so the site plan's going to stay the same, the only change would be how they engineer the site, and how the stormwater leaves the site.
Right.
You know, those are questions that I think is within your purview to ask and get answers to, because that's what the public wants to know.
Correct. But it's not, but it's not what we're voting on, though, right?
Right.
Yes, yes, in a way it is, because...
Sure.
Even though this vault is underground, it's still shown on our drawings as part of our site plan, and we are approving, or not approving, the site plan contingent upon that underground vault being there. Is the applicant able to tell us, or the engineer for the applicant, are you looking to significantly modify this, to get a total waiver on it, or are you looking to knock off 10%, or you don't know even?
You know, there's a, there's a couple things that you alluded to, I know, when you were just describing.
If you could speak more into the microphone?
Wrong thing, I'm just, naturally, there you go. Steve mentioned, you know, a point about real disturbance that were, of extra impervious area you're adding. The extra impervious results, you know, the building's going where's the parking lot is right now. So that's not adding any extra impervious. What is, would be the extension of the parking lot, right? So that's actually, so, so how, as an engineer you would look at it is, would be, okay, we've added X amount of square foot of impervious area, and you would, in many cases, and in many villages, we would do, on that incremental amount of impervious, we'd provide the stormwater detention. So instead of, for example, in many cases, we, we'd put it in parking lot itself, we'd design the storage in the parking lot. So that's, that's one case. The, the second case is, there is 20% of the site that's not even tributary, runs off out in front, and doesn't, wouldn't even go into these vaults anyway. So there's an, there's an argument there, you know, why, why provide detention for something that you're not even collecting anyway? Okay. So, I know we've had some discussions, and, and maybe we just need to discuss, have further discussions with staff and engineering, really, and sort through this a little bit further, 'cause I know we are changing the regs, at least on the DuPage, have changed. And, and we make a good observation, is just the 60-inch, is it being surcharged? You know, it's an important fact to know, is the, is the capacity of that 60-inch today, has there been, you know, noticeable surcharge, or... Yeah, see, that's why, it'd be nice to, yeah, I know there's a study done, further downstream, right? Because, because we're being held to a release rate even more strict than DuPage County right now, about 30% more strict. So, because of a study that was done, okay? So, you know, it might be important to look at that. So, when I suggest we'll save, change the site plan, in a sense, no, it won't, because we're still maintaining the same parking, we still need catch basins to drain the lot, regardless, what, however we incrementally decide to do, whatever storage is agreed upon.
Okay, I think we're getting a little bit off track here, we're concentrating on stormwater retention right now. As per, I'll get to you in one second, Craig. Commissioner Pill was asking, we, as I see it, John, and please correct me if I'm wrong, which I sometimes am, we are being asked to approve a site plan which includes underground stormwater retention right now. It's in, it's on our plans, it's engineered. We have nothing to say, it's not our purview, that if they choose to request from the trustees, a variance from that, that's up to the trustees, that's not our purview. We are here to okay the site plan, or turn it down, the way it's presented to us. Am I correct, John?
You are correct, I mean, whether they have underground detention or not, the site plan that you're presented with, which shows an addition and a parking lot, is going to stay the same. The only thing that may change is some of the grading, or some of the outlets, or, or whatever. I think the real question is, if they obtain a waiver, is that gonna affect the overland flow of water onto neighboring property? And that's a question you can be concerned with. You should think about engineering every time you get a site plan, every...
And we're the public hearing body, and that's what's going on right now.
Right, so, so they're, good question, I, I don't think, saying it's not your purview and you should ignore, it's the right answer.
No, 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 we're not ignoring it, John, we have it engineered in here, and we are okaying it. Now, if somebody oversteps us, the village board, where our bosses, we can't do anything about that.
True.
We are okaying an engineered plan, which is going to include underground detention, it's gonna hold 100-year storm, and I don't know what else we can do to mitigate any conceivable flooding problems.
And it sounds like there's not enough information yet to really talk intelligently on the subject. I will say this, if this gets up to the village board level, and a waiver's requested, and they think there will be some negative impact, they can refer back to you...
Absolutely.
...to hold a new public hearings, really, to address the engineering aspects of this.
Which is what should be done, if there's a significant change.
Yes.
Okay, I, I understand that answer. You were gonna add something?
Hi, I'm Mike Littori, from Littori Brothers Construction. I was gonna, I totally concur, that's exactly what I was gonna say. Our understanding of this, this meeting tonight, was to approve the concept of it, to approve the addition, we were here showing you the color of the bricks, the setbacks, where the parking lot's gonna go, how many parking stalls, we're here, we're not asking for any variances at this time. If we... If we were able to engineer and work that out with staff and work that out with the DuPage County ordinances and Westmont and your in-house engineer and our design team, that would not, that would not change the outline of the parking lot or the outline of the addition. The concept of the, the concept of the project would stay the same is exactly what you're looking at here. We just brought that up in, in good faith. We figured that since we're going to be working together in a partnership of a business and a community, we brought it up in good faith to let you know that we still want that door open to at least discuss with staff to come back. And then if, if it does come down the line to where we are going to make that change, it, it could be a variance from your stormwater ordinance and you would see us again at that time.
You see, what I'm concerned with is, we have a plan in front of us who are too okayed, yes or no? In this plan that's here, engineering has been done to completely contain a 100-year storm.
Mr...
As it's presented to me. That's all I care about. I have done everything possible, or you have, by presenting us this plan.
Yes, sir.
To protect those people, your neighbors, from flooding.
Absolutely. And we would protect them, we would protect them even if we were in the negotiations about the waiver. The engineering, all the i's aren't dotted and the t's are not crossed at this time. We are not, you are not approving the engineering as it stands right now. This is the concept and the direction that we want to proceed at this time. Engineering, staff still has comments. There were five major comments that we've addressed. We're prepared to talk about those at those time, at this time. There were other comments made by staff that we haven't addressed all those issues yet. So this, this is a work in progress. This is the direction that we want to go. And you've got a very competent staff that we're going to work with to make sure that the neighbors in the town is protected and that you gentlemen and, and this board, this commission, is doing their job in protecting the town. We recognize that.
Exactly. We think alike.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we are at Commissioner Van Buren.
Only I have been here longer than you, but you have. And I've watched Julian come, I've been here since '73. Watched Julian come before this board and grow and expand. And we're glad to have you back again and expand again. You've been good for our community. And we hope that whatever has to be resolved, from an engineering standpoint, I'm sure it can be resolved. But I just say I'm all for your project.
Commissioner Fidesco?
Based on your presentation and the designs that we have here and the concept, I'm in agreement with it. I don't have an issue whatsoever with the actual building, the parking lot, the layout, how it stands. And, and I would hope that any engineering, you know, decisions that are made that you would abide by, you know, and, you know, that we protect our residents. And I don't have any other comments.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yeah, my only concern is that our residents on that side are protected and that work with staff and that staff has an ear to the, to the residents too. Good to go here.
My only concern is, I believe I've made it clear that the stormwater is on, it's either yes or no, as we turn it up or down. The only question I have is from your concrete block retaining wall north of the curb line of your parking lot. On your sheets, sheet number 10, where it's showing the existing grade and the proposed grade, you've got a 3-1 pitch. What is the run from that proposed wall to your north property line? That's a pretty doggone steep pitch. I was wondering if you could perhaps terrace that back there.
Mr. Chair, I believe that's one of staff's comments and I believe that's where, you may have, the original submittal only had a single retaining wall back there to adjust for grade. I think staff's comments, I think we're putting a double wall back there now. I believe that's one of the comments and one of the, one of the changes that would be coming through.
As usual, staff's ahead of me.
Yeah. You got a, you got a, you got a competent staff there. They're holding our feet to the fire.
Well, like I say, with a 3-1 pitch, I mean, that's pretty aggressive. And if you were to terrace, it would be a more acceptable planting if you were ever to consider putting evergreens back there. And maybe...
You can add another neighbor situation as well.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
And also if you were to terrace and maybe expose that wall where it's even exposed a little bit more than what it is, maybe an ivy could be planted a little later on.
Side 460 would be...
Other than that...
They have to understand 90% of that back is a parking lot.
Yes, I know. Plant the ivy by the home.
There's 17 feet distance between the curb, the back of the curb. So you have, you have a length of 17, width of 17-foot separation between the curb and the...
Is that what it is?
To make up the grade transition.
Yeah.
And we have two walls, one 1.7 feet now and one's 2.0, just under 2 and 1/2.
That's a much better...
So there you go. You sort of broke it up a little bit. And then like you said, this, it'll stage for the plantings. Which would bring a much better stair step to the...
I remember walking a lot last, last time we were here, you were here about 10 years ago for us or something. And you're to be commended on your diligence, on your work, and I'm just happy to see you expanding in our community. I have nothing else. Does anybody else have anything else? Let me find my sheets of paper here. Okay, as far as planning and zoning item 12031, Blue and Electric, item A. Site, and I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to the Board of Trustees, a site and landscaping plan approval for an addition in the M Manufacturing District.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Fidesco, seconded by Commissioner Fleet. Question on the motion? The only question I have is, the site plan we are approving, everybody's concurrence, it does show underground stormwater detention. Okay? Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. All right, sir, you have our recommendation for approval. Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, might you give clarification on the recommendation? The, the, you approved the site plan, the dimensions, the setbacks, the number of parking stalls, the shape, the design?
Everything.
Okay. Just wanted to get that clear.
Thank you. You're good to go. Thank you, sir. Okay, next item on the agenda, planning and zoning item 12032, Village of Westmont, regarding the detention area located at 1006 Beninford Lane for the following. A preliminary plan of subdivision request to subdivide a detention basin out of Falcon Villa's Lot Number 23 in the R4 General Residence District.
I'm going to speak on this...
Who will speak for the village?
I'm going to speak on this one and then Steve May will likely have some additions. This lot has been a problem for multiple years. One of the subdivision owners who is adjacent to this existing detention basin actually owns the lot and he's required to maintain the lot. He's spent thousands of dollars over the years. He's had a lot of discussions with the village board and with Steve May. And he's very eager to give up his ownership and he's sold the lot to the village for a dollar, correct, Steve? So, over the years, Public Works has been very active in helping the detention basin get unplugged because the neighbors in this area have had a lot of flooding in their yards due to the restrictors and other issues in that area. So basically, we are required to subdivide this property out of the existing neighbor's lot and that's what is before you today. And Steve, if you have anything else to add?
Yes. The, the, the history is old and for, when they developed this townhome development, the detention basin is not just this lot. It's this lot and all of the backyards for all the properties on the west side of the street. It's a one, one street subdivision. And the, all of it drains down to this northerly basin where the outlet structure is in the bottom of that basin and it's, it's a very difficult maintenance operation. For reasons that are known better by the homeowner, well, actually, the good comments earlier in the night, tonight, were about homeowners' associations. And I'm told that this development was marketed bragging on the fact that there is no association that you have to deal with and no fees and anything like that. And what they did is, when the homeowner of this Lot 23 closed on his property thinking he was getting a townhouse, he got the townhouse and 100% of that lot to the north of him. So private individual has a maintenance responsibility for the entire detention basin and the outlet structure, which by today's standards isn't fair or probably wouldn't be permitted. The, we had a series of meetings with them. We've had to assist multiple times in doing the maintenance on the basin. Particularly, you can't unplug the restrictor while it's flooded, so we spend several times a year out there pumping it out so that they can go and maintain it themselves. And there's a lot of valuable changes that are worthy of being done there. But is it fair to make that the responsibility of one homeowner? So we started having meetings and the, there was a multiple topics. There was no goal as to the outcome of the meeting, but it was to explain to everybody on the block who calls the village about the flooding, the regular subversion of their backyards when it was at high water level, is that, you know, your options are, you know, we continue in a code enforcement way and make it the responsibility of this one individual. You can talk about forming an association. And there was a lot of dynamic conversation that kept getting steered back towards, we don't want, you know, anything to do with any of it, including the homeowner on the corner. I don't paraphrasing and I'm not, I'm not adding any comment to that. But through the special meeting that we had with them, which was last fall, and then subsequent meetings with the village board, the village board is unanimously in agreement that, that this is a, an unusual and atypical burden for one homeowner to have, and we would like to take the maintenance responsibility of the detention basin over. But Mr. Ivanelli is technically the owner of the property. So the subdivision is nothing more to create his lot into two lots so that he can sell us the one so that we can maintain it in perpetuity. That's the, that's the short version.
What happens to all the backyards?
Pardon?
What happens to all those backyards? Did you say that's part of the ownership?
It is part of the, well, there's a stormwater easement through all of those backyards and the high water level of the detention basin remains and it is still L-shaped the entire length of that block. So when that basin is at high water level, all those backyards will be underwater, but we're not maintaining those. We're maintaining the piece of the detention basin that manages the outlet structure so that we can keep it free and clear. And actually, what we're going to do is do, can you picture the location? Are you familiar with it?
I've been there.
Our, our own detention basin at the fire department is just on the other side of the berm and this basin drains into that one. And then all of that drains across Cass Avenue. So we want to put a structure in the, once we own it. We'll add a new structure at the high point of the berm. So we've got some place to work on it while it's underwater if we have to jet it out or do some sort of maintenance. But that's, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of valuable construction that we did not feel was fair to put on the homeowner. But we will be able to maintain it easier than they would even as an association, honestly. I'm not in the habit of asking, you know, for more, you know, maintenance properties, but this is the, the best solution in this case.
Commissioner Fleet, do you have any questions? No. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yeah, I was around when, a resident of the village, when this was developed. And I'm surprised that it was, the development was approved, you know, with one owner having the responsibility. And I just, it seems so unfair. And I'm glad that, you know, this is in front of the, in front of us now, but we'll be again in front of the village board so that that burden can get taken off that homeowner and that the problem in the area gets resolved.
Agreed.
Don't have any other comments?
Mr. Van Buren? You answered my question. I was going to ask, what, once you, we have ownership, what are you going to do to improve the situation? And you have already answered that, so...
Yeah, make better access to it.
Commissioner Pill?
No further questions, thank you.
Commissioner Thomas?
No question.
The only question I had, are you going to remove the foliage that's in there now?
We're, we're not, well, at least not immediately. There's, there's two factors that go into play. One, when it was, as it's been private ownership, it's my understanding that the homeowner had discussion with our, which, also our landscape architect, but, you know, coincidentally, and got some advice about different things to plant in there that, you know, would be native. Now, everything in there is not native, but if we were going to mow it and regrade it down to a dry bottom basin again, a flat mowable basin, at this point, because it's been that way so long, we would have to start over with engineering. We too are subject to the DuPage County ordinances. There is probably wetland material in there that would aggravate that project, so in all likelihood, it'll remain like it is.
When this, when the restrictor is open and the stormwater is flowing, all these adjacent backyards to the south of that, they don't usually flood, do they?
They flood, actually, the, again, a less than ideal design, but the, the elevation of the structures in the backyards are not that much higher than the bottom of the main basin. So it doesn't take much water before it starts showing up in the backyard.
Okay.
What's been happening though, when it's been plugged, is that it should never hit high water level except in a 100-year storm and, you know, which we have every year. But, you know, but that should be the only time that the properties are inundated. And even when that happens, it should drain down within two days. And that's not happening now. It stays underwater. They all have difficulties keeping turf growing, you know, and maintaining.
Who's gram?
And, you know, it's very difficult. So we'll be able to, by relocating the restrictor outside of the bottom of the basin, we'll be able to keep that free flowing and, and not eliminate, but really reduce the frequency that that...
At least mitigate.
Gets underwater.
Then I'm led to believe then, actually, with all of those homes that are south of the retention basin, their, their backyard is in essence part of the retention basin.
That is correct. They're encapsulated in easements on every parcel.
Anything you do will help them, that's, I'm sure. All right, I would entertain a motion to recommend approval to Board of Trustees, planning and zoning item 12032, preliminary plan of subdivision request to subdivide a detention basin out of Falcon Villa's Lot Number 23 in the R4 General Residence District. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Thomas, seconded by Commissioner Fidesco. Question on the motion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fleet?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Fidesco?
Yes.
Commissioner Pill?
Yes.
Chairman Richard?
Yes. Staff have anything?
We wanted to confirm attendance at next month's meeting, if there's any issues ahead of time.
There's a good chance I won't be here.
And you will be sorely missed. I want to go on to record.
Oh, well, thank you.
Anyway, if you have any concerns about attendance, just let us know ahead of time and we'll try to plan accordingly.
I have one question for John. John, when we approve and village board makes it a law by writing an ordinance incorporating a landscape plan, that has the effect that, that landscaping should be maintained, not removed? I'm talking about trees?
Yeah.
Pet peeve of mine?
That's something that I know Shannon and I have even talked, I think, a while ago about going through our zoning ordinance and there are several changes and improvements that need to be made. And that's a clarification, I think, is that whenever there's approved landscaping plan which includes fencing, includes trees, shrubberies, that that has to be continuously maintained by the homeowner. It's implied, I think, something that we, I believe, enforce. If the fencing falls down, we say that was part of your landscaping plan and it's required by code. But it should be flushed out more clearly.
Well, mainly, I'm not talking about homeowners. Many of the businesses that I've been through the last couple of six months, our parking lots, especially the auto dealers, are not too great about. Okay. So the question is being looked at.
If there are specific properties, maybe we could talk after the meeting and then we can go out and look at those.
I'll have to rethink where I've seen it, but I'll talk to you.
Sure. Sounds good.
But I think it's a simple code amendment.
Right.
To section 6.01, I believe, where we require landscaping plans to, in commercial districts.
That's all I have. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pill, seconded by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.